I will call this a work session of the Oak Grove School Board to order. First item of the day is the MEC renaming process.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Good evening, everyone. At the September 14th work session, we had a lengthy discussion on where the task force was and where staff are with the naming and renaming of the MEC campus and the new building. From that, the board, from the board feedback, we talked about bringing some names back that Superintendent Scott would present to the board, not only on what the campus name, recommendation for staff would be, but also the new building. And then how the remainder of the campus and buildings would be named. In your board packet, you will see the names that district staff and the task force are presenting to the board for consideration tonight. For the campus, the Oak Street campus, the Pathway Center, the David Hill Building, the Miller Community Center, and the Hillsborough Community Garden. I want to also direct your attention to our rock star Beth Brazier completed a diorama that's up there by Superintendent Scott that has a layout of the whole campus so that you can see what we're referring to as what and where the names will be applicable to should the board take the district's recommendation for the renaming of the campus and the name of the new building that is currently under construction?
I mean, yeah, point them out here.
Okay.
Michelle can take them around. She had to eat a lot of takeout. So the David Hill Building, that's just the old elementary school, and so we retain the name. And then right here would be the the whole thing's Oak Street campus.
It might get me to come up.
Yeah, that might. I mentioned takeout.
Yeah, I know. So I'm trying to orient everyone here. So this is Oak Street. This is Walnut Street. Okay, so we're looking to the north. This is the main David Hill Building. This is the Hillsborough Community Garden that is currently existing there. This is, Mark incorrectly, but right here, this is the David Hill, the annex right here where the portables are. So this would be where like this, the Miller Community Center would be. So this is basically the gymnasium cafeteria area. There's another little space in there. This is the new building under construction at the corner of Walnut and, or Oak and Fifth. Everybody oriented to what we're looking at here for the campus. And then so everything at this property, district staff were recommending to call the Oak Street Campus. We have included the translation for each of those through our translators. And so this is just a visual of what we're talking about. You want to pass it around to see it or however you want to do it? We can walk around. So that's what we took from the comments from the last board meeting to bring back for tonight. Our hope is that the board will have some discussion about that. It is an agenda item for the regular session, which will include a public input piece if there are any comments. And then our goal would be during that time that the board recommends these names for 30-day review to be adopted at the October regular session. Are there any questions that we can answer or anything that you hope to gather some more information on during the discussion?
I also brought Yedira Kessi last week, and she is on board with these names as well. Oh, yeah, I guess I should mention, Yedira, Martina is not going to be able to. And then questions for Casey?
Just one more question for Casey. Casey, apologize. Can you give me the, the last two milestones and the dates of those for the completion of the new campus?
Yeah, so really the, the last kind of milestone is the completion of the new building. So it's scheduled to be complete very end of November, first couple of weeks of December. Of this, yeah, right now, it's getting close. They got Sheep Rock in there. They're, they're moving fast. With the goal of us having the ability to move in over the winter break and potentially open that for student staff use starting next semester.
Is that my name that you could support being concerned?
I really, I really like the, the Oak Street campus for the whole campus area, but like for the building itself, I do like the talk. I just think it had a question on that process. The only thing we're considering right now is the campus and not the whole building itself.
Cool.
As, as listed there, the fact that that's what we approve after it's on 30 days. We, on all of our signings, we of course will put it in Spanish as well. Yeah, everybody. So then, those we craft a motion for us to use, then call it, give it out to the regular side?
Do we have to decide now?
Okay, can I, I really need to name these things.
Should we have this one motion or?
I think we put in one motion.
Yeah.
So maybe one motion.
Really?
It's, it's in there, ready to go, and we just need to insert a name. So right now, it's a little disgusting.
Yeah, so really, for, really for the consideration and approval, the, the board for the campus name and the new building, we put the other names in there for policy, district staff can name portions of bill names or other aspects, but we wanted to give you the whole picture so that you can see all of the names. You know, part of the goal, not only from the surveys, but from the task force was to, you know, try to honor some of the history of that campus, but also rebrand it, which is the next step. So I think the motion of the campus name and the, or all the names together is fine.
Because the, I mean, we're sort of honoring the history and, you know, where its contribution. Like, but Community Center, that's not what we call now, right?
No, there's, no, that's new.
So, so I, I feel like we could have one motion and incorporate all five, which that would sort of be my process.
Only that, I don't know all the details of that, but I think that's fine.
I agree.
We should be able to articulate.
Yes, exact motion with all names. I think that whoever makes the motion can just say the five names and replace it.
Any else on this topic? One is the whole campus and the other are individual. And so not everybody's that campus, you know, my, my two cents would be, I, I like that we're preserving the David Hill name. That's preserving the name. I like that we're able to sort of honor those. I suppose it, theoretically, this would be important because it's already called.
True.
We also made a legitimate decision to not name anything after a program. Moving on, that topic is the annual student investment account report.
Yeah, that's, I'll get it started into, Michelle can channel it to you as we top it up with dollars. I have a whole bunch of slides in here that are really meant to stimulate everyone's memory about where we've been with this process. And so I'm going to quick through them. Please don't feel like you have to read the content of the slides. It's a lot of pretty pictures. So just a reminder that the Student Success Act passed, and the student investment account represents about 50% of that taxation mechanism going to schools for the purpose of equitable outcomes for students. You can remember that there are a lot of other different categories of that at best in schools. And, you know, we're tracking all those and taking advantage of them. Tonight, we're talking about the student investment account. So we were allowed to invest money in four areas, and the local school board is responsible for approving the plan, the budget for SIA investment, which you all did. Thank you. And the four categories that are allowable are investment class size, increased instructional time, long round of learning, and student health and safety. A reminder that within our strategic plan, the bigger box there is our continuous improvement plan. All of our, all of our ability to leverage funds toward the goals of our strategic plan is something to take advantage of is giving the SIA dollars that came to us. And we try to achieve these goals from access to preschool, through diversification of our workforce, and third grade reading, all the way through ninth grade on track and grad rates. These are all the targets that we're trying to hit when we spend this all of the student investment account. We also have a statement in our SIP which reinforces the requirement of the student investment account to focus on traditional underserved groups of students in our community and create equitable outcomes by removing barriers and creating opportunities for students. So this is a reminder that for all of our goals, we disaggregate data by race, ethnicity. Also, we consider students who are identified as students who are talented and gifted, students experiencing disabilities, foster care, poverty, and homelessness. And they'll get the support they need to ensure that their rate of improvement, as measured by our SMART goals for our traditionally underserved students allows them to achieve at the same level as students which basically benefit from our school system. But this is the lens through which we look at our investments and decide if they're working. We did a community engagement process. This is, thanks to Jill, probably here. Facilitated a focus group, this, we had felt through HGA, we had engagement from school board, HGA, students, parents. We played with monopoly money to understand what it feels like to have a finite amount of resource and then create priorities. That we're going to spend those dollars in those four buckets. We did a survey that included more than 3,000 individuals. The biggest stat there is parents and family members, followed by students and the faculty staff who responded, sharing their priorities in those four categories. And just a reminder, that's instructional time, health and safety, class size, flow around and learning. We created a pie chart to figure out the proportion, proportionality of our investments in each of those areas based on input from the community and the needs of our students based on data that we looked at. The lighter color is what we need to invest to maintain current service level, since we are already investing in those categories. And the intense blue, the intense yellow, represents new investment areas. And so today, the, the purpose of this report is to catch you up, one year later, and only a fraction of what the dollars were supposed to have been given the taxation structure. We were able to accomplish all of the current service level maintenance items in the bottom right-hand corner, as well as investing in additional FTE with counselors, school sites, nurses. Up in the upper left, you can see specialists who serve students with special needs, speech and language pathologists, and English language learner specialists. As well as we're able to continue with the pilot boys and girls club. As you know, in partnership with the city, we broadly expanded access to our regular elementary schools. And so these are the categories which we reported back to the state quarterly. Michelle and I sit next to each other and update our budget sheet and a narrative that says what we've been able to accomplish. And then we were asked to answer four specific questions and post that on our website, which you can find at the link. The questions were, what impact have you made with SIA dollars? What have been the barriers to implementation? What have you done to engage your community? And what feedback do you have for us? And just loosely, the, the barriers have been related to COVID and our ability to reengage with our families has been really strong. We've checked our answer. How about these original investment areas? Do these still resonate with you? And what really resonates with the community, as we've reported before, is extended learning time and tutoring for students, as well as student health and safety, mental health, behavioral supports. So we think we still have our grant meeting the needs of the community, and our dollars are going towards those things we originally said. And then I checked our answer, which we continue to make. Our feedback included, hey, we'd like all the money. And that the reporting mechanisms are funky at best. We'd like to be able to report these investments alongside our SIP, which we also turn into the state with budgets. And so we, you know, just to be honest, we've shared feedback with the PD that we'd like to streamline our budget and our narrative processes all into one thing. And we're not alone in requesting that. And our partner, the ODG, receptive to that feedback, and they're trying to streamline how it is that we do these reports. This one's unique because we rarely are asked to go to our board and officially make a presentation annually to report on a specific grant like this, but here we are tonight, ready to answer your questions. And that's what we have. Michelle, did I miss anything?
No, you just go right through it. I do think it's important for folks that are new to the information that in 2021, the first year of the student investment account dollars, we were little down to about 30% of our initial allocation. So as we, you know, learned that over time, we made a difference that's still aligned with our original goal. And just to go out, if you pointed out that that was a pie chart, was the fourth pie chart. If we adjusted towards communities and feedback that we thought. Stakeholders, so, yeah.
Next, that's for our, our ongoing community engagement. Our learning acceleration plan, turning out of COVID-19 looking ahead in the future, we'll continue to align our SIA goals with our leadership team. And then, as you know, we'll be folding all this into the next strategic planning process. We have already shared with our, the organization of project with that, with that, all this documentation there. Learning about how probably coming the last few years as far as focusing our goals and investing our dollars in the right place.
I was just going to ask about like our ongoing community engagement. And I think a lot of times when we hear, especially for this type of targeted dollars, and we have our PACs that were starting to engage and make sure that we, here is, listen to what the, sorry, once the Latinx PAC presented this last time that we're here, we were hearing about tutoring or additional instructional support as something that was really needed or requested by the parents. And so how can we incorporate that feedback, even if it's outside of the specific feedback sign that we're doing? And also provide like feedback needs to say, because of what you said or what you informed, that we changed our plan or what we're, we're asking so that, so that there's that transparency about some of the accountability of when we are asking for feedback, that they see that impact. So I'm just wondering, is that something that we have incorporated? Again, looking at the victim, when we end up with the mutual, like, act and like, let's, let's help them maybe conceptualize what this means and how to, are we that one? But then, coming back and then, here's what we made.
100% agree with that. We actually, we did the monopoly money activity with PACs that we incorporated feedback from PACs in PAC meetings into our notes when we applied our grant for SIA. So when we hear the presentation, when we, meaning like staff members, hear the PAC presented to the board, usually I'm thinking, this is great because they're telling the board what they told us at PAC meeting for the monopoly money activity. The good follow-up is, you know, I'll kick the friend. But we, when the PAC left last time, we thought, okay, next time we need a formal cycle of, okay, so here's what we've done since then. I mean, we can always go back to the next PAC meeting as well. But if, if that, I think we're all acknowledging that that should be part of the board and PAC interactions. So what have we done since last time, based on what you said last time? And then what's going on now? Anything more to add?
Pretty much. I, I think it's important that they, they see that circle and that loop back. And I think that was something that, you know, parent after our last meeting. And we've had conversations already with working with family engagement to continue to refine and look at how that loop is occurring so that we can ensure that they know that their, their warrants and the recommendations that they have are making an impact.
We can schedule the, the next time these PACs on factor report. Not only will we give them an update, we'll do that prior as well, but we'll give them an update on the recommendations that they need. And there were a couple of topics that they wanted additional information on. We're scheduling those at the same meeting that they come back. So we are trying to be really responsive to the questions that they ask before we start the discussion.
Would it be appropriate for us to take that one step further? To provide that information to all of the PACs electronically, to say, this is where we are, this is where we're going, so that we, we don't have to wait until they come back to this demonstration and to this body to speak? If we send that information out to them unsolicited, that would, that goes a long way in saying, okay, we're getting, we're starting to talk about, they're starting to understand our goal. So the question then is, can we send it to them without them having to ask?
Send them a response to the recommendations they make?
Um, yes, but also maybe a synopsis or a summary of what we're doing and what we've accomplished with that money. So for example, the big ticket item, or lack of better term, is always reducing class size. But how did we, maybe we did? Just consider it. I'm not asking you to commit, but I'm, I'm just saying that it would go a long way as, you know.
Yep.
As a member of a PAC, if he got that information and did that interaction.
Thinking about how to, how to put that, it's like, on the website, we post the agendas and the slideshows that we offer to the PACs live, so people can see them. And I'm just, we should talk about how to make that loop happen. So there's some context for it.
Okay, that makes sense.
I appreciate that, though.
That makes sense. And then we also need to just remind them that it is there, because sometimes there's some other information there.
Yeah.
We might miss it.
Yeah, but the value we share for sure, just like, what are you doing? How are you getting a bit of knowledge, right? How do you report back stakeholders?
My question is, our amount was reduced significantly because of COVID. Do we have any information about, like, do we expect any shift, like, coming years, like, when? Much during our last budget development cycle, we have concluded our budget fully funded. And so do you think that's really going to happen, I guess is what I could use.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think now that the state have a year of experience and they are seeing the revenues come in, they're just much more able to predict how that's going to work, and especially coming off the other side of the pandemic. So there were some really crazy variables at play last year that have fallen away. And so I'm, I'm, unless there's legislation to undo it, I think we have already given our allocation for this year and next year.
Building on that, that was one of the questions I thought that, so we, we had, the most recent budget forecast was August, maybe? Right, so, so we've had a budget forecast update, and in that, and I'm not just plugging those ideas. In that, did they, did the economist indicate that things were on track or?
Very much so. They are, they are anticipating a sizable kicker. And the economy is, is stable and strong right now, so those revenue streams are looking very positive.
At some point, the conversation on the sizable kicker, there was discussions that that could create some budget deficit for us. So is that to be expected?
I don't see that coming through just the school fund level. I haven't seen or heard anything about that yet. I feel that at the level of the appropriated funds that were in good condition, and then you're also increasing the stability farms at the state level. So they're taking extra measures to make sure that we're not impacting. Which is all, this, I can really share what we put on the budget matters website about that forecast and kind of how that will shake out for us here in Hillsborough.
So was it between our retreat and our last work session?
Yeah.
I'll make sure that you guys get that.
Question. I have another question then. Unrelated to SIA specifically, more SJA total. 20% was supposed to go to early learning, and we have pre-K programs. In what ways were we able to avail ourselves of, non-SIA specific, but SGA intended to expand and encourage precamp?
I'd have to go back to older in our team and figure out the details, but we were able to take advantage of the best we pre-Ked by people that had to expand. I think that the district were caught off guard by that. We've been able to expand. I can't say exactly how much, how money because of the SSA dollars we were able to expand. When given the opportunity.
I can't, I can't.
You can get back.
Yeah, sorry. Just came to, seeing the first slide, just sort of, we're, we're. Any other questions? And just to confirm, this presentation meets our legal obligations to inform the board of our current plan, right?
Right. We post it, we say something here, we give the minutes to ODG, and then we post that to try to answer some of those questions on our list.
Question, but just on it going back to the slide where it shows what we were able to accomplish. I think that that was pretty remarkable, given the significant budget cut that we did have. Seeing how much we were actually able to retain and be creative in addressing a lot of the priorities that you had. But that's pretty great, so. Yes, to our team for the community. I think that probably going forward to the meeting, hopefully, we want, hope that doesn't happen, but you never know. But that there's a way for us to even figure out prior to making criteria that if we are short, what are the things that we're going to not do or not going to be able to work on? Because that money is intended to our specific students. And so how do we make sure that out of that list, we're working on this thing that have the greatest impact to that student? That this number is intended for. Just maybe that going forward, if we could decide or have as a process, when we don't have a whole new criteria by which things fall off, that we don't.
The criteria that we used to get to that pie chart was, what does the data say? What does research best practice say? What does our community say? So we were sort of, there's a triple, and maybe that's not appropriate, but I don't relax and send those three data points that I think serve us pretty well, focusing the money on students who need that, need us to invest.
And? All right. Travis, so all about you, huh?
Well, this is my partner, Michelle, and me. And again, we gathered over the summer applications for our community curriculum advisory committee and our budget committee. And at this moment, speaking for myself as secretary to the CCAC, the, all of the applicants except for two identified as white. And our proposal tonight is to postpone the appointments to those committees until we have a more diverse candidate pool. And we are doing that, we're recommending that to you all because those are your committees. And you have indicated to us that you'd like to diversify the representation in those community, in those committees in order to be more representative of Hillsborough and the Hillsborough schools community. And so our goal would be to, in the next month, come up with a strategy alongside you, because these are your committees, and I'm not trying to recruit myself, to them, how it is that we could.
to them, how it is that we could find a more diverse candidate pool before doing the dot activity where we go for the open seats and then the regular session real form. Michelle, do you have anything to add to that?
So Mary, you'll remember that when we talked about this several years back, that we committed that our board, maybe with the representatives of our students are really the same percentages as we were hoping for. And that's, that's what we're, that's what our goal is. And we just haven't been able to achieve that. And one of the, just to be more blunt, one of the things that we need help with to remember that we'd be interested in participating. And we understand this is a, I mean, we always struggle to get participation on this committee to hold that participation throughout the scope of the terms. But at this particular time, it's even kind of a bit members are interested in stepping up to that. We would really appreciate the help. But another thing that would I think that talks to just a number of open institutions that we have, maybe we would just invite you all.
I was thinking about the last time the pack gave improvement and they requested to have like the more casual meeting with us. I suggested that we produce something like that with the whole of that leadership that that we have. And maybe that's an avenue for us to promote our, our committee, especially with board committees and explain why these are really important to us and why we want them to participate. But I think the additional piece for us is also to figure out what barriers might exist that for that people who participate in meetings. So like, if somebody doesn't have a laptop and takes a virtual meeting, some people need numbers or phone books. Or is it healthcare issues, transportation issues? Where are meetings for health gear? It's not really public. It gets here very frequently. So that might be there where we might think about even just moving where we own that meeting to make it more accessible. So I, but I, I wouldn't want to prescribe a solution without hearing from our, our the people that we want to serve and say, like, what, what can we do to make this more accessible? And make sure that they're helping us inform and help us.
I agree with that. And I think that, you know, it would be helpful to know how, how far this information is reaching, right? If, you know, yes, there may be a number of things that we're doing to advertise these open positions. But are, are these opportunities actually reaching the communities and the people that we would potentially want to reach? And I think that goes along with the barriers question. And so I'd be curious as to what we are currently doing and have done. And then, you know, identifying certain avenues that we could push information further out to reach kind of that, that broad group that we're looking for. And then my second thing was around meeting, meeting requirements. Is there right now allowable to? Does attendance have to be in person or can it be hybrid? Do we foresee that it will continue to be allowable for it to be hybrid or will? Since our district is now open again, are they required to come and physically be present at these meetings? But I think that physically coming could potentially be a huge barrier for folks.
Is this like learning what is your role? Even for managing to be really thoughtful, I'm not really really knowing what is this committee about? Anyone like what's, what's on there? But I don't know, we can even get someone that's already a participant. I mean, you know, give their experience of like how it came to them. We can have that kind of.
Can you do us a little summary of how many positions are generally there are, how many are vacant? How many are continuing?
Yeah, there's seven open because of the term expired. And then there are an additional, we think, three right now that we have a couple of books that we'll do soon. We apply, but there could be ten right now.
Three, ten vacancies?
Yeah.
It's only twelve.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, okay. And how many, the fourteen students?
No, we add students that are the ones we still try to get a representative from each side.
So of the fourteen, maybe having ten, ten, we have ten vacancies of which maybe three may want to continue to do that.
Yeah, and a couple of our member student representatives, Latinx community, we're still trying to convince them to reapply. So that, that could be a benefit to the pool. That's part of the difficulty is they're supposed to serve for years and they're wanting to move on. And so we need to retain fresh flows of people who are interested.
And when would the committee normally meet? And how risky is that being able to conduct the business of the committee?
Remind the C C A C, it meets at the first Monday and other month. And we would postpone, in tonight's conversation, postpone the October meeting until November and consolidate the agendas and keep it, it would be okay.
Is it, is it possible to get a summary of all the committees? You might already have this, summary of all the committees, the business that they do for the board? And then the open visit, the number of positions on that committee? And then maybe we can add on to that, uh, information with regard to how you participate, if it can be hybrid. The man, the not being physically there is not mandated. Those kinds of information. Uh, we could do like an F A Q, uh, kind of idea, frequently ask questions and then provide that information in, in order to, and then send that out to all of our pack organizations as well. Uh, so that perhaps that might help.
Yeah. I'm taking notes here. Michelle, budget and C C A C, and Michelle went around last year to each C C A C and made that presentation. Michelle, do you want to share?
Yeah, I did, um, I thought requests to be added to the, their path agenda so that I could come and talk to them and answer any questions they may have about the position. But it didn't really generate a lot of applicants. So I felt like that was a first step and a good step. But, um, the budget committee has two vacancies. And normally we would, I think, November third might be the date for applications this time. And, um, but typically we like to have our new members appointed to the board and then, um, receive their orientation, which is, you know, just the basic review of the role and what it takes and all of that sometime in December. So that they're ready to go again where we begin our budget development process. But I'm happy to write up a quick, like you said, synopsis of exactly what it takes and maybe have that translated and more available and.
No, I, I appreciate what you've done and trying to, if, in my mind, what I'm thinking is if I send an email to the Black Village and say, hey, we really do need some help. Let me tell you what we need help in, help with. This is the scope, this is what they do, and we really need representation. If I go to them and then I had that F A Q or that list of, I, I think that would help. But it couldn't end up with not so much result that you experienced before, but it's just something that I thought might help. If I go back to, if I go back to the Black Village and say, we need help, they're gonna say, how?
Well, I, I think that that's very valuable because I think we're not, we're, we're, it's not. I think the method here is just a different method. And so sometimes if you already have, especially with our tax or communities of color, if you have a relationship with the person, there's more, um, how we share information is a lot of word of mouth recommendations. So if they trust you and know who you are and you say, hey, I need to, you know, that that folks will get more weight for shouting on the poll and just giving a presentation and saying, hey, you wanna let's do this and do what it is. So if we have a relationship and there's some test, then I think that's a lot more, that's gonna help a lot. And I'll wait until then and then so I do agree that it's just as important to have that information. And for us that we might not know all this intel. But when we go to the back, I would change the, I think it'll be a little bit more impactful that way.
Just another effort to try.
No, I, I like that idea. I, I didn't have strong relationships other than the district contact person today, the act. So, um, I would like to be there to be that face and to answer any questions. But if someone else could, you know, actually share that information and learn some credibility to the role and, you know, provide that assurance to folks to help them consider it, I, yeah, definitely.
But again, it, it, it's not an indictment on you in any way or your effort in any way. All it is, is based on the relationship. And if I go to the pack and say, hey, guys, uh, we really need help. I know you don't want to overextend yourself, trust me. Queen of overextending herself, but we need some help and we need some faces in the place that we, as we would say, right? And we need some diversity and some creativity. So I, I just think it makes sense that we try.
I think it could be a little bit of a touch too. I think that yes, absolutely, there's really need to come from you. I've been thinking this will probably be too late for this current round of deadlines that we have. But even thinking about next year, whenever we have like a district one job fair, we can also do volunteer opportunities and really create some of that interest. Um, maybe even collect some names early on so that we can kind of have a school of candidates that they potentially kind of gather and draw around. So maybe utilizing the existing platforms that we have or other type of improvements that we do, whether it's job fair or, you know, I don't know what other things we do at the district level for that. But maybe including a couple of these volunteer committee positions and recruiting for those simultaneously might, you know, bring in more people or at least get the information out there more. And that would be in addition to the relational efforts, which I think are absolutely critical. Really are worth, not, I think, is the thing that gets folks in. I would usually, if they make up a more board, we're very lucky that a lot of the area we could help. I know, Michelle, the fact that I have a conversation about it and her, she's also learned that for, we have for achievement. We would be happy to do that.
Yeah, two spots on the, was it community open, Michelle? An application proposed on November third. That's, that's the normal cycle. And Travis, we have ten spots open.
At least seven, yeah.
At least seven, three hoping to continue.
Yep.
And if we don't, uh, so.
The seven are the C A C C?
Yeah, every, yeah, every seven each year. In two year terms, fourteen.
Right. And so ten spots open, three have been given as a one. So if we agree that, let's try to do our best to reduce the work first pool. We would table the selection of that community until the second meeting in October.
I believe that's fair enough. Do this work session and then do the regroup session.
And, and sometimes in that work session, we've had people come in and introduce themselves. So through an allocated time during the work session on the second October meeting. And then, uh, maybe do dots or whatever. Whatever, with this many people, it's, it's gonna be a thing.
So.
And then we would confirm those appointments that evening in the regular session.
Correct, yeah.
So let's clarify, um, budget committee has two vacancies and they're at due on November sixth. And then, so, sorry, thank you. November third and then the C A C C committee has seven vacancies and they're at our due wish.
Okay, they were due. We're proposing that they stay open.
And in order to, uh, consider candidates on the second meeting that would be closing this time.
We usually do, we can advance and we can choose our candidates and they are going to keep them up so they can make themselves present or submit a comment if they'd like to. One thing to know, it's one candidate, we, we had to go back and see if somebody could be an employee and serve and they can't. So if you're recruiting, please know that we can't have an employee apply to the C A C. And, uh, you know, just one more comment for the group where the relationships conversation, I really appreciate because you're asking someone to enter into a somewhat political arena one night per month during this school year. And you, you gotta know who those people are. And they do need to represent our community and they do need to have some savvy about what's happening. I would just throw that out there, my experience in the last few years. And I invite former C C A C members to comment.
Well, I, I think given some of the, how shall I say? Rhetoric, uh, in the media right now with regard to critical experience, I just wanted to say that.
Yep.
Um, this is the committee that would help us make sure that we don't go down that path. Uh, this, this organization, this district does not. But that's another way to make sure that it doesn't go down that path. So it's, I, I think it's a win-win for all of us so that all of us who make a reverse part of this group should probably help and try to, so I think we respect that.
Last thing I'll mention, just as, um, I mean, certainly the C C A C, especially leading into the conference, as I said, for the adoption, um, and putting that, you know, making that recommendation to the board. The C C A C does have a very critical role in, in the review of curriculums that are district those number. And if everyone recalls, following the giant meeting that we had, there was a huge influx of applicants for the C C A C. Um, and it was my understanding that it had drawn applicants who, um, were really focused on just one item. And I think that it was important to make sure that we are, um, selecting candidates and even reaching out broader to candidates that have, um, really the, the wide range of curriculum, curricula that we would be considering as opposed to just one topic here and that, whether it's critical race theory or C S E or, you know, whatever it is. I think that the work of the C C A C is larger than those very highly polarizing topics. And so as we select candidates for those, to fill those seats, we should be balanced in making sure that it's not one topic heavy. And, and as we're vetting the candidates, I think that's, you know, something that we can consider as well. But I just wanted to put that out there as someone who has been a part of the C C A C process in a very, as Travis had mentioned, in a very kind of heavy political, um, topic. And kind of seeing it all the way through, there's a lot more that C C A C does than just C S E.
We could also review the conversation that we had two weeks ago where the, the board actually approved or lined out the proposed work for here.
I was thinking we shared that originally, especially that people have been coming in and talking about this. For problems like, oh, here's what we actually want to communicate with the community of you and help us develop, or deal with all these topics there that they're trying to commit in the comments to these things so that they're not surprised to arrive and, and they were thinking other than do this one topic that, oh, our responsibility is to work on all of you. And I think explaining that, like, what is your role? To cover that, I think the other thing that we could also look at is maybe start applications. But I don't know how long that the council is going to be. But I'm here to make sure that our questions that we're asking people that are aligned with our district value and what we're thinking of. Maybe I can also review, maybe not this time around, but for our next year, I'm going for a question.
Thank you.
So you wanted just to be head down and thumbs up being the idea of shaping it for October. Feel about that. So we would be slightly, I would do a thought over.
Well, um, yes, I agree that we should try and table it to recruit some more votes by that cover. But I want to make sure that we're not talking about the second Tuesday in October, but actually before Tuesday in October. So that gives us time to have that conversation and maybe even bring the show in or do whatever it takes. If that makes sense.
Yeah, the second meeting at the door generally will discuss the potential applicants. Yeah, the second meeting at the door generally will discuss the potential applicants up here in the work session. Decide who will be nominated and then move and nominate them when we get them.
We're happy to join any faculty to come anywhere if there's an opportunity.
Thanks, boards. Have they had a problem with we?
I just, just have a question on, there are a lot of good ideas that have been tossed out and yet we have 14 candidates already in there. And I'm wondering why this couldn't be more fleshed out and a program put in place for next cycle. Why the delay? Why, why is it critical to have that delay?
The reason I recommend delay is that a couple of years back, after I look back, is that the board made some agreements as to what the makeup of those committees would look like. And the candidates that have applied currently, we would not meet those goals to having a diverse representation of the community. That, that are representative of our students. And that's why we made the applications because we wouldn't be mission that we're going to accomplish.
So where does that leave us if a month from now, we're in the same situation where we don't get the volunteers that you're looking for for whatever reason? Where, what, where does that leave us?
I think that's a good conversation to the board to have settled.
And I think we've done this before for these tables and what we've done in the past. If anybody who's already submitted their application, they're still in the pool or something. They don't have to be required or anything. We get to extend the window of having an opportunity to add more candidates in the pool. But everybody's still part of the selection.
Right. I, I understand it, but I'm saying if we're still in the same boat, that you don't get any additional candidates that you're looking for, where does that leave us?
Yeah, it's also the priority of the board to define how many members there are. So if we needed a representative group out of fewer candidates, we could also shrink the number of seats in the CCAC. It's been, it's been different sizes historically.
How many do we have now?
14. Back in the day, I believe that there were seven who served sort of in proxy for board members. So each board member.
I was just thinking about that. Do you remember?
Back in the day.
Good times.
And it's evolved since then and expanded because of the value of round representation. So if we got to a small pool and we wanted to get a demographically representative group, the board could move to for a year, some temporary window of time, have a committee of fewer members that were demographically somewhat representative of the year.
So to on each point, and I was thinking, and I just didn't say it, so thank you for bringing it up. If we get to the end of October and we don't have any additional candidates, then I believe what should be our action is to pull from the candidates who volunteer. And then the next year, we have a more robust plan and intentional plan to bring up more diverse candidates. But to be intentional and, and to actually articulate what that plan is supposed to be. And I think, I'm not speaking for you, Moni, but what I heard on the undertone of that is also, is this fair for the candidates who, who have already applied, who did it so timely? And I hear parts of my job in back of my head when I, when I say that. So out of respect for those candidates, if you don't get what we want at the end of November, I mean, the box will work pretty amazing. Then we move with the candidates that we have.
I think we'll have some options. We need to decide what our options.
That's fair.
I think we'll have different options when we get there.
Thank you. Thank you. But I think, I want to make sure that we consider exactly that.
Do we have to meet for, for that meeting, for that committee to conduct business?
Yes, I think that we should do.
So depending on the number, the size of the, right now it's 14, so we have to have those.
If they say they take 14 seats, you have some related duty. You also have to attend. Yeah, you guys, you can drive the policy of the AR that describes your expectations.
Yep, so also I'm thinking about, to Erica's point about reviewing the application, the questions that are asked and things like that, it was an excellent point. The other thing with that is, are we also looking at diversity of thought of the way that people consider and look, have different worldviews about things? Or are we just looking for demographics?
Yeah, I mean, I personally always think that just, just having diversity of people, I think that I automatically assume that everybody has a different thought that has a different perspective that they're coming with that. I think looking at the question as you're doing the application, I think that's really what it is. You don't see people's picture or know anything about them except for what they're answering the question. I think that helps, at least for me, see like what is the, what are their thoughts about these different topics that they want? So that's what we think we want to collect.
So as we, as we have collected a lot of good ideas here. I think I made quite a list of your inputs up there. I'm on page three. But what we will do, we'll bring back kind of the proof and plan where we'll gather all these actions, put some plan in those. And then we expect that we're going to ask for your help. I think we'll get better results.
I'll add one more thing. If we're, if we're gonna go with this and delay it, that we notify these, the current applicants that the window's been extended so that they're not left in the dark.
Yeah, I wanted to be able to talk with you all first before we did that.
Can we just make your show part of the show?
No. That's what board meetings are for. This is great input.
Just one note. I found the FCT downloads and the application deadline is November 1st, not the 3rd. And I just wanted to make sure that you got that right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
For budget.
For budget. But we, we sort of danced around the CCAC committee.
Elizabeth being the week before our second meeting, so October 19th is the meeting I said, is that all right?
I think so.
That would be good for Rose's meeting. Yeah.
Um, the, I guess my final thought on that is Travis, without creating more work, right? Take whatever digits you have and let's, let's put that forth to allow us to have that information from topics with various factions, different people that we want to engage with. You don't have to create anything. Just let us know what we exactly have. If that makes sense.
Package it up and forward it to us.
Thank you.
What I can do is I have a list of this entire year's pack and family engagement meetings already set up. Some have a link on there, some it's by monthly we do it, but I could share that with Travis and he'll be able to give it to you so that you know what the meetings are for this time. I can make contact.
He planned us an agenda, I don't know if actually, so that you'd be like welcome. Not that you wouldn't be welcome. I said it wrong.
Do not.
You're welcome.
All right. I'm guessing that, we have a board update and that reminds me that, so do we have Michelle, maybe Kaylee attending this portion of the meeting virtually? And if so, we have a system through which they can indicate that they'd like to ask a question or?
Kaylee is not participating and Michelle is.
So do we know, do we have a methodology or?
She's a participant in here, so she can raise her hand.
And I won't see that, but Jordan, you can see that?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, she can see.
All right.
Yeah, she's up there.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I'm sure she's the name, not the face.
Yeah. All right. So our next slide, I think that's multiple of them, but they've tried to pick this up with the back school on date for the fall meeting.
I'll pick this up really quickly and pass the French essence to update on our engagement process. We'll have to make up some time.
Oh, so it's right to me. I'm like, and, no, Jordan, can you get it the next time, please? Um, Kelly, and the next one. So I'm going to go over real quickly. Thanks to our unions and in participation with you and to all of our teachers who conducted Welcome Back Connection conferences. Those all took place on the 7th and 8th before we returned to school. I forgot about my dates right back, Tuesday and Wednesday. And just for some updates for you, over 13,000 of our students were reached during those two days and they're continuing to make that contact. So that's 13,000 out of 19,000. The wonderful news about that data is that we found that the 83% reported that there was no needs that they needed met at that moment. If you remember, there were three questions at the very end that we asked on those that were making the phone calls. Was there an immediate need that we needed to tend to like right now? Was there, do you want us to check that? Should we check that with the student like at the end of first quarter? Or are there no needs at this time? So when I say 83%, 83% reported that there was no need at this time and that they were just really excited to get back to school, which is exciting. We had about 12% check in that they, they want their student to have follow-up at the end of first quarter. And then about 5% that we were able to identify that needed immediate needs. And so with that, our principals and teachers and those who made the phone calls were able to activate a resource that we had last year, which we utilized to find out what was it those needs that the, the family was needing. Was it food? Was it housing insecurity? Was it mental health? And so those were able to be activated. And our level supervisors have been working with our principals to ensure that there is a system to check this data, to sort this data, to filter it so that it's not just, okay, we know this and let's move on. It's we know this and what can we do to meet the needs? Because there's nothing, I think you said it best, Nancy, it's relationships. Relationships is everything. And that was the basis of what we wanted people to do with these Welcome Back Connections, is build that relationship with the families, build the relationship with the students and really get to know how the experience has been for them, what they were looking forward to with coming back and how they were feeling. And so our schools are working as school-based teams to dive into the data. Last week, we had a professional development and principals and administrators looked at their data and saw what we find and collaborated together to see what was some ideas or some tricks, tips that we were using to close those leaps. And then we have every, ever school based on the conversations that they're having with their counselor, with their grad coach, with their wellness instructors. And most importantly, the teachers, because that's really who the, we want the students to connect with, right? Is the teachers and the family with the teachers. And so moving forward, our level administrators will continue to work with our schools to figure out how we're going to continue, especially with those ones that need a connection tap before the end of the quarter. And then we, as a collective team, are looking at how can we utilize those questions moving forward into our conferences that we have in November? How can we utilize those questions as touchpoints moving into next quarter? It's a lot of conversations that need to be had, but what we found, I mean, to know that 83% of our students were excited and ready to come back, of which they were, you know, it's not 100, we're never going to have 100, but it's better than average. That would, in some places, we get you some extra brownie points. And it gives us something to really target with those who are going to meet, who have needs right now. So just wanted to give you and I wanted to thank you as well as our union and our teachers who worked real hard to make those connections and who continue to make those connections with the students that they haven't connected with. Is that best? Any questions?
Right. Kelly, the next slide is mine. So I'm just sharing some information on the negotiations update. We have completed negotiations for our memorandum of understandings with both classified and lessons. And we have focused most of the memorandums on working conditions and safety conditions. I just wanted to bring, highlight a couple of things for people to be aware of. We have a process in place to provide additional support for safety conditions by using air purifiers. If we're unable to provide the throughput recommendations per the reorganization framework. And we're really strongly encouraging staff to go to their supervisors if they have safety concerns so we can monitor and adjust as needed. And that's been really helpful to have in the, in the moment, responsive ways and means to help support our staff with those things. Staff are also afforded COVID leave and benefits and HR department are working in a system to place our, and support our staff in this process. And then if we are guided by Washington County Health to quarantine at class or grade level or possibly a school, teachers are afforded one day to transition to the comprehensive distance learning. And then instruction carries on as normal with a full day of learning for students. Anytime classified staff are asked to transition to the comprehensive distance learning, they will be given preparation time and supports as applicable to those situations. And then we are also really pleased that our teachers are broadcasting and providing according to a Google classroom for individual students and smaller groups that are quarantined. So those students can have access to instruction during the day. Well, that's really a value add. And we appreciate that our teachers are doing that on behalf of our students. And then finally, our negotiations for success are part of me. We are moving into our second sessions, which will take place on October 5th with ATA and October 6th with GPT. Any questions? Yes, Lisa?
You said, you said broadcast on the Google classroom?
Yeah, we're calling it instead of like live stream where I would be engaging with you. It's broadcasting so that students can see what's going on and be connected to the classroom, but the teacher isn't necessarily engaging with them in the same way. So they're getting the opportunity to either broadcast or to record those lessons and then students can go through those and try to provide some different avenues. Any other questions? Thank you.
I follow to that, that it doesn't concern all grade levels or does it look different depending on like secondary?
You know, I might have to defer to my OSB colleagues. I think it's the same for both. That's what we, you know, negotiated in our conversation. So.
Or is it when you're at the high school and you have the next period of classes that? If one student was quarantining with some, right, in quarantine and then that class got quarantined, but all the other ones are still like, what's happening in person? What is our setup or for that in high school? Do we have packages and locations?
So I would say for the MOU, if the student is quarantined, then the teacher would either broadcast the lesson or would film it and then post it. So it's more about the student, less about the class. So, and it's core instructions, very similar to what we did in CBL. I think it's really difficult for any of us to be on all day. So they're, they're filming or broadcasting that core lesson. All right, Kelly, next slide is mine.
Thank you.
So look, kids, real kids reading real books. I had to pick that up. This is too beautiful. So we, as we had it last week of September, we're just super excited to have our kids back and we really tried to hold space to respond to school needs. We knew that some of our kids didn't have the opportunity to be in school for quite a long time. And we need to reteach and support them in new ways. And so that's really been our focus. Our biggest challenge is we have openings. We have needs in our schools. And it has really put a lot of pressure on our schools to fill those empty spots. And I won't say it's easy, but we're making it work. So I think last time I looked, there were over 50 open jobs. Never can I, I'm old, I've been here 27 years, never have I ever seen that many openings. And it's, it's certified, a lot of classified, and it's, it is putting a pressure on our schools. Staff have been supporting each other, you know, counselors going in, teachers covering period for other teachers. They've been doing a lot at the school level. Classified has been supporting each other in new ways, coming from working with this group of students to this student with special needs because there's nobody to do that. Last week, we had all of our teachers on special assignment and just said, go to schools, the extra hands, which of course they too have tasks that they are. which of course they too have tasks that they are needing to do. Our principals have been having to cover classes and assist as paraprofessionals. So it has been a real challenge. And so been brainstorming with our HR team and Kim Bear, she reaches out to come up with some creative ways to let people know that these great opportunities to serve kids in our schools, but that's our number one issue. And also with our ESS system, which is our substitute system, we don't have subs either. And so we're trying to be real creative, but that is our number one challenge. So we have kids back, so we're working through it.
A question on that because I think we're not the only district that is struggling though is that trying to improve the idea that it's a challenge and everybody's trying to improve. So is there any competition like OBD or TSBC that there's been a failure in that? How do we, how do we? Is there opportunities to create for staff that already have some division to do? Or help with licenses or education or the way or path of? There's a way of working with PSBC. I don't know if they're right active.
No, you're right. There's been a pretty significant movement when it comes to giving emergency licenses for people. And so TSBC is working. It's it's not a snap of fingers and hey, that person will do it. But there's a lot of originality that's going on. Because of this variation.
You say our shortages are more than classified or more than wasn't?
More than classified.
Would I share some of the ideas that you and Colin talked about?
Oh, sure. So we have our early childhood improvement throughout our system, which a lot of our students have been involved in those courses. And so one of our out of the box ideas is going back kind of in the archives, the last four, five, six years and sending out some information, just saying at one point you were kind of interested and here we are and we still have kids and we hope you'll consider it. It's a great career. So that's one.
Yeah, I was thinking we're trying to also use social media as a tool to put things out there for folks to apply. And one thing I also think is like word of mouth is really important. Everyone here knows people that potentially may be looking for something part time, you know? And that's what I would encourage you to think about too, is outside the box of potentially working. You know, maybe you have a schedule where you're taking, they're taking classes and it's Tuesday, Thursday, but they're available maybe Wednesday, Friday. We would love them, you know, to help support us in that way. And then if they see a position that speaks to them as well in the district, you know, we're we're willing to, you know, look at help with applications and help with all of those pieces. And we've done some of that support before and we continue to do that. And we want to send out flyers to maybe everyone in our community about this and use some QR codes to make it easy for them to pop that up, start filling out their application. So it's in the process, in the flow of things.
But easier you make it for us to share something with like that one.
Yeah.
Last year we get our virtual job fair and we were able to interview that early on and were able to get a lot of great candidates. Just to be perfectly honest, we're also looking at some of our student teachers who may be ready for this next step. And we're getting them on licensure through TSBC. So we're just, we're thinking outside the box, but you have other ideas too. We're always open to feedback and thinking of other things. I appreciate what you shared, Erica, about making it easy to share information as well.
So something we said, sorry.
I was just gonna ask, is there an additional cost to have staff cover other staff? And do you expect to like have a belligerent faculty this short or what's that role of that or will you?
Yeah, I mean, I can speak generally and I might have Michelle speak a little bit about this as well. We have, you know, like if someone is out sick or something like that, then we have, you know, sick leave afforded to people. And so we try to get coverage. And sometimes I'm at the secondary level, we have period coverage for people to cover for each other. They have an open period. And so we've been able to use that and that's been a helpful way to cover some classes. At the elementary level, you know, it's even more complicated because of the way the schedule is set up, but we're working and thinking outside the box. And we have a system set up and thinking about, okay, I have, you know, each of our schools, we've tried to denote at elementary, one licensed sub, building based and one classified building based sub. And then at secondary, there's two in each of those categories. So we try to start with the person inside the building to happen. But if we need additional people, we may be borrowing from another school in order to make those covers. And then we start working our way down to reaching out to our tosis or having to move people around. And even some of my staff and I know some Dale staff at SP, they have reached out to support like office staff because of those experiences that they have. So we're really just trying to think outside the box, how to make those things happen. So schools can keep the flow of things going. That's our priority.
The the back half of that, what you're asking about Lisa, the back half of that is the impact on the staff when they have to do that for an unending period of time. So which leads me back to my question, which was going to be, what you're talking about ladies is the shortage that we just have because we just have a shortage. That does not even include what we could potentially experience once we cross the threshold of individuals who may or may not be vaccinated because of this state mandate. So once again, I apologize, my day job is talking through here. And and so I guess my question is, what does that mean? Because that's over and above the fifty openings that we've got right now. That's way over and above that. Do you know, do we know what the statistics are right now? That's what I'm asking. So.
Well, here Nancy is doing an excellent job of foreshadowing our next slide, which is about vaccination updates. And so if you want to go ahead and go to that one, we have surveyed and sent a survey out to all of our staff. And then we have a website that also has FAQs on there to kind of help support them in different ways. If they need uploading their cards or just different things that they're needing. And then we're asking all of our staff to complete their survey by October sixth. And this is a really critical date because we have our risk manager who is, we have a really in the flow system that when you complete your survey and you're needing an exception, then it goes to your supervisor and you and then you look at an open schedule instead of an appointment with the risk manager who that meets with the employee and supervisor to talk about what mitigations that we're going to put in place. And then our vaccine planning team is also working to towards other steps for supplemental workers. We're kind of doing it in phases. So right now we're focused on all of our admin, super tech, licensed and classified staff. And then we're going to move into our supplemental staff. And then I think Jordan can speak to kind of what our numbers are as of right now in terms of folks completing the survey.
Yeah. So right now we've sent it out to the classified licensed staff administrators and super techs. And so that's just over twenty-six hundred individuals and we've had just over fifteen hundreds completed in just over a week. And so we're sitting right now, about ninety-six percent have submitted of those have submitted that they're vaccinated or will be vaccinated by the eighteenth. And so that's where we're sitting. Of course, we expect that percentage of exceptions would probably go off over time as that takes a little longer to get to paperwork and so forth. But that's where we're sitting right now.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Only questions to ask about. We get to our cohorting and, you know, we're not for sure exactly what our staffing situation is. We've already started working through the various departments that are problem solving. Take for example, transportation, we've had two hundred staff recently and we don't yet know what the vaccination percentage is coming to right now. It's a super high percentage, but we also know that people that have vaccine cards are up. Those that haven't, of course, haven't waited yet. So I think it is a little artificially high. We'll know more in a couple weeks. Take for example, transportation, we brainstormed several eight different events that we need to do. And we started that conversation a couple of weeks back and then we began that Friday. Carol's already in the process of looking at what would be involved to.
I think that's two sides of the world.
To.
There we go. There it is.
Yeah. So these are the top, you know, I think five brainstorm ideas. We have a longer list that hopefully we don't have to get to that. But, you know, a couple of these are kind of in order, you know, easiest to hardest and less impact. So combine bus route. So as everybody knows, we we route students at the beginning of the school year based on where they live and their proximity to the school. After school has been going for a few weeks, we're able to actually look at live ridership. You know, just because we routed seventy-six kids on a bus, there's only twenty-five on it consistently or something. So from that, what transportation has been able to do is review those and look at how could we combine or reduce routes? And so right now we're looking at six to eight routes that could be reduced. The number sixty-eight doesn't seem like a lot to outsiders, but our Carol's goal was like, man, I'd be lucky if I could get three to start with. So that's actually pretty significant as you multiply that by grade level and bell times and that kind of stuff. So we're in the process of doing that. The next list now, we're still in the kind of investigative stages of the reimbursement for parents as their guardians to self transport. Lot of nuances to that, a lot of things to get into the weeds about, about who that applies to and how we would roll that out. But we are in the process of looking into that. Another idea, TriMet passes. This is an idea that we use successfully in the summer school and it'd be really targeted. So I think, for example, in the summer, a lot of the Glencoe High School area was able to provide TriMet passes for secondary students that to get broaden that a little bit. So again, a reduction of six to eight, that's a good chunk.
Yeah. And there's a feasibility around two turned up for that you could divide to buy, but you know.
We, yeah, we would be having to look into that granular detail. Let's say that we had, you know, seven families and not all of them could make it. Well, then it might not be worth doing it unless all of them could be one or none kind of a thing. So we don't have that unequivocal outcome for a certain family. So those are all, yeah, absolutely.
The thing to remember here is that, like Casey said, if you've got another seven or eight ideas that are also being worked on. It's not necessarily a list of great ideas. Right, these are, these are, as we get more and more, as a situation becomes more and more simple, then we're going to have to make some choices that aren't quite super popular.
I will keep in mind not to be totally down, but this is really just for home to school. This does not apply to like great ideas or how we're going to address extracurriculars, that what exactly these field trips. That's the way. We're definitely trying to adjust times of contests. We are not doing field trips, for example, right now. That's kind of more in collaboration with the pandemic and that kind of stuff. But we are really trying to limit what we're doing right now, especially at the beginning of the year. So we know exactly who's on the bus, what our capacity is or lack of capacity is. Our hope is once we get past the eighteenth, we'll have another chunk of information where we could say we need to keep going or we can get through or, you know, but currently we're having mechanics, office, everybody driving.
Yeah. Have we been unable to provide transportation to somebody for a competition yet?
Yes.
Rose drove a group of kids on her daughter's soccer team.
So yeah, those are the things we're looking at. I think that when it comes to transportation camp, we, you know, they're in constant conversation with the athletic directors. Hey, what is the capacity of your parent group? What is the capacity of the other school to adjust the time, the date, the whatever? You know, we've been combining teams on buses, you know, we can, we need to drop off at Centennial, at Reynolds. We need to combine the bus. We'll get you to come pick you up because it's not in that time window, but to get there, we've had to be creative.
Yeah. Well, you're going to have to continue to be creative. So eventually people are going to get to the point where they're going to have to reduce extra for the items.
We hope we can find ways to.
Yes, that's right. That's right. Stay creative.
Can I just say, yes, we do have three people that have come to present tonight and they are the next topic. So.
Sorry.
I know. Okay. We're thinking about doing a dashboard.
Oh, yeah. I almost got out of it.
Let me just add on a little bit. There's been conversations about, should we do a dashboard that indicates that we know the cases? And that is something that we're working on. It will be a very simplified process, but we feel like within ten to fourteen days, we'll be ready.
One more. Yeah, it'd just be number of cases, number of quarantines and the percentage of students body so you can see proportionally.
Yeah. It looks like the blue shaded area on the previous one is something you added.
Did I?
Maybe. No, that's not it.
It has been said, I've been tracking Travis's COVID case charts. I want to distance myself from COVID nineteen. I appreciate that you're saying Travis is not an epidemiologist. That is, that blue shade is is what OJ puts out to show that 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 data is kind of like as yet incomplete, I believe, as they completed.
We're not going to go there.
All right. Sort of linking on to that, I think the acceleration update is also due back to Paul.
Awesome. Yes. Kelly, how's that? I've always stand up so the team can stand up too. Yeah, Travis isn't a doctor. He just plays one on TV. Okay. So learning acceleration update. If you'll jump to a quick clip, please. So I'm just going to have you stand up real quick if you're behind. So as we brought our kids back this year, we really wanted to make sure that we changed the narrative and made sure that we understood that our students didn't lose learning. If they knew fractions in fifth grade, they probably didn't learn that. They probably just didn't have the same level of depth to apply it in a way that was in school. They could have done that maybe at home or building something in the garage or cooking in the kitchen, but it may have been different. So what we wanted to do is really help people understand that we want to accelerate their learning and keep them learning, keep them engaged in school and help our teachers and our system differentiate from their learning. So to that end, we have been really strategic with what we are doing to support that acceleration of learning at the three level. And so I'm going to ask Lindsay Garcia, who's our new executive director of elementary, to talk about elementary acceleration. Andrea Neville, who is our executive director that serves middle schools and Alden Montide and Lando and Lad Acres in the Brown Feeder that Lindsay doesn't. We need to split that up a little bit, right? And then Frank Capella, who is our high school executive director. So first time ever, we've had three level directors that will put up officials to support teaching and learning. And I know we decided to hand it off to them to talk about the work at the level.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm excited to be here and talk about how we're accelerating learning at the elementary level. Can you go to the next slide? All right. Here's some beautiful pictures of kids in person all day, every day. So exciting. And I'm starting with literacy. We were given a gift of the literacy adoption last year, wonders and matasitas in Spanish. And it was so amazing to be able to implement this adoption using the platform, a digital platform, because we are in CBL. But this year was super exciting because the teachers were able to open up all those boxes and give books to the, you know, in the hands of kids. And so as Dale was sharing, it's really exciting to see all of the pieces of the curriculum being used fully. And so, yeah, we're just really excited about that. I wanted to explain a little bit about our literacy block. It's really important to have a strong literacy block in place to support our students. So we always start with the core lesson or the the grade level standard. And then after that, to the whole class. And then the next part of the literacy block has to do with what we call small groups. And as we know, teachers are pretty magical, how they differentiate for all of our students. And so those small groups are really an opportunity for teachers to target those skills that those small groups of students need. And while the while the teacher is rotating, working with those small groups and those students, the other students are also practicing that skill that they just learned from the core lesson, doing independent work. And so I just wanted to share that's how we're accelerating learning literacy. And then as far as math goes, you see up there, bridges. That's our curriculum that we use kindergarten through fifth grade for math and then we use CPM for sixth through eighth grade. eighth grade. Um, and there's a picture, let's see, the top right picture is a sixth grade class using CPM. And, um, that was actually, so it's a similar structure to literacy in that the teacher starts with the core lesson, uh, the grade level, level lesson, the standard lesson. And then, um, uh, usually the, the students are working together collaboratively, especially CPM is very collaborative as well as bridges. And so, um, kids are working together using manipulism, problem solving. Um, and the teacher also has that time to work with small groups, making sure that she's paying, he or she is paying attention to those Latinx skills that the students may have and trying to help them, um, to, to gain more and more skills, uh, to get to that, to be able to reach that, um, grade level standard. And then we have win time, what I need. So, um, and that's mostly used, it's really exciting because every elementary school has a time during their, um, master schedule to have win time. And that's a 30 minute block of time where all students are getting what they need, whether it, if they need, um, to work on skills in literacy or math, uh, whatever they need, that's what, uh, the teacher provides for them. And so this could look a little differently. It could mean that the teacher is working with them in small groups, really targeting that those skills in literacy and math, reteaching, teaching in a different way, um, kind of going deeper, um, in a standard for certain students if that's what they need to work on. So, uh, that's something we're really proud of and we have a lot of great supports and resources for that. For example, we have the Bridges Intervention Kit for math where, um, it really does focus on providing that instruction that students need when they need to, uh, work on those specific skills. And then we, this is really exciting. Uh, we have what's called Wonder Works and Intervenciones in Spanish that align with the wonders curriculum that we already have. So that's brand new this year, the Wonder Works and the Intervenciones. And so we're using that during our win time and we're really focusing on providing professional development for all of our teachers so that we can use that, um, really effectively. And then finally, I wanted to talk about, uh, PLCs, professional learning communities. I realize I use a ton of academics here, so I want to make sure I say them all. Uh, but professional learning communities are just a gift for our teachers. We really believe in collaboration, that our teachers should be working together and sharing all of their wonderful ideas about best practice. And we, uh, at least two times per month, and many schools do this more often, um, grade level teams meet together with specialists. So for example, it could be a third grade, um, team at a school, uh, with, working with a special education teacher or an Yale teacher as well, or it could be a third and fourth grade team of teachers. And what they do is they look at data, they look at how their students are learning and they kind of try to see, you know, are, are our kids learning as they should? Are they making progress? What could we do to help them? Um, is the whole class doing well? Uh, could we kind of change things up for the whole class if we teach? Are we ready to go on? Or is there a small group of students that maybe need a little bit extra teaching or do we need to teach them in a different way? So it's a great opportunity, like I was saying, to have all teachers work together and share those best practices. And then we, I also put action team on there because that's also a powerful structure that we have, uh, at the elementary level in that if we see that there's a individual student or group of students who are really struggling, um, even after we tried certain things in our little PLC, we kind of take it to what we call our action team. And that's when we kind of get everyone at the table. We get not only the grade level teachers, but we get the counselor and the instructional coaches possibly and the start teacher, we all, and we all come together and we create this, uh, special plan for this student and we create an intervention plan, usually four to six weeks. And then we come back to, and we implement that intervention and kind of see what progress has been made with that student. We come back and we analyze the data and then if it's working, great, let's keep going. And if we feel like we need to make some changes as a team, we decide that what's best for the student. Thank you. We're already close on time here, so I'll pop to middle school Kelly. Um, for that. Uh, the gift that we have been given at middle school is a seven period day. And if you have been around in our district for a long time, this has been something that we have dreamed and hoped and wanted for a long, long time to give students access to not only the core curriculum, but whatever supports they need, as well as access for every student to have at least one elective in their day. So, um, the SIA funding and SDR and all those things have allowed us to do that at middle school, which has allowed every single one of our students to have an elective. And then we've also added in addition, a support class at middle school. So kind of our version of what I need at middle school is for literacy and math. Each of our middle schools have anywhere from nine to 12 support classes that are running this year that are targeted at students that we have, as best data means coming out of the pandemic and the PDF, they're in that support class for either math or literacy and they're getting resources for those classes to help students fill some of those little gaps and help accelerate their learning. Um, the other piece, just with the seven period day, providing electives to students, I think one of the biggest things we have to do at middle school is engage kids, right? Cause, um, it's an interesting time, February, March, lots happening, right? Lots happening in middle school. So we really just want to engage kids back in school. And I think that's the biggest thing that we're trying to do at middle school, just want them to be there. I think, um, our middle school, summer school program, one of our schools is called it, welcome to middle school. It really is fun. So I think, um, it's just bringing that in. And what I put up here is we had an amazing partnership with HSF prior to the pandemic to do some fundraising for career labs. And in all of our middle schools, we now have these career labs where kids are having this opportunity to access what I call an appetizer course of like, um, just different stations. And if you look here, each of these kids, that is not a real dead dog, just so you know, it's a veterinarian station that they're working on. Um, the kids to the right are building an engine. The girls down below, I believe, are doing something with, um, I think it's an engineering program of some kind. So, um, that is something, so we're just really trying to get kids thinking about their future, thinking about college and career pathways in middle school as they go to that high school. Um, so that's just a really exciting thing that's happening at all of our schools. And the other thing that's really important that we have really focused on is advisory. Um, we really feel like the social emotional piece is really crucial at middle school and that has been happening, um, every four days a week at our middle schools. And we've been using a curriculum called Character Strong and just really trying to bring kids and help them connect a little bit more. And just get over to Frank Capella, we're short on time.
Yes. Um, a couple of things going on at the high schools. Uh, advisory twice a week, uh, those lessons are created by team of teachers and administrators out in school. They are designed to orient and connect students to the high school as well as build on the social emotional relationships to make all your students successful. Um, grade level teams on track meetings. So, uh, grade level team is basically, you know, the teachers who are primarily assigned to a grade level, working with an administrator, their counselor, probably the graduation coach, who to, uh, meet weekly to look at student progress at the individual student level and then help formulate a plan to support students to make up missing assignments, get, uh, their attendance in line, uh, take care of things that they need to take care of. So it's individualized support. Uh, we expanded those to all grade levels based on the strong work done in ninth grade level, uh, grade level teams throughout the district. Uh, re-engagement in college career pathways, arts activities. I think one of the biggest things that's been going on, uh, related to high schools is getting students back to the idea of being in school and all the opportunities that they have. If you think about our junior class, uh, they spent their entire sophomore year and part of their, their ninth grade year, our sophomores, this might be their first time on the campus this year. So there's lots of, of connection and opportunity sharing going on, especially right now through advisory, uh, career, uh, not career, uh, um, activity fairs, things that they can join, ideas of how to get connected. One of the things I think that was really hard for students, um, through distance learning across, across all of us, all of our, our schools and states, was that informal web of supports that students experience through that stop by after school and let me help you with that, or you really should consider going out for track. All of those little informal supports were now recreated because students missed out on those for C D L. And then credit attainment, uh, we are working at all of our schools through those grade level teams to really hone in on what students, uh, need as far as credit attainment to , uh, help them to get to graduation. And we're doing that at all grade levels.
Year eighteen. I think you'll have time for questions, but maybe you could, you know? Okay.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, so we're gonna turn upstairs and let's call it, uh, seven oh six, five minutes. Seven oh six, time to do it upstairs.